Okay. Call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. Hanos?
Here.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Here.
Mr. Carlin? Dr. Flowers?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah.
Mrs. Silva?
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have a moment of silence for Lucille E. Ryan Galvin, 95, of Bedlow Avenue, Newport, who passed away peacefully at home on Friday, March 6, 2015, with her loving family at her side. She was the wife of the late John J. Galvin, born on April 26, 1919, in Newport, Rhode Island. She was the daughter of the late Patrick J. and Catherine L. Ryan. Lucille was a graduate of Rogers High School and was instrumental in planning reunions. She was a member of the Redwood Library and loved to read. She was an avid fan of the Celtics, Patriots, and Red Sox. She was also a source of wisdom and advice to her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Lucille will be remembered for her kindness, her good cheer, and her generosity, but above all, her devotion to her family. She is survived by her children, John, Patricia Galvin Machetti, Robert Terry Galvin, Christopher Galvin, Neil Galvin, Richard Galvin, and David Galvin, 19 grandchildren and 10 great-grandchildren. In addition to her parents, she was predeceased by her brother and sisters Milton E. Ryan, Catherine L. Miranda, and Norma A. Smith. Do we have something, Fitzgerald? A moment of silence, please. Thank you. I was just asking the superintendent, Ed Fitzgerald also lost his father late last week, but we'll have a moment of silence for him at the next meeting. Is there anyone signed up for public comment?
No.
Does anyone wish to make public comment? Here none, we'll go on to our student activities update.
Hello, everyone. Midterm assessments will come out next week, marking the midpoint of the third quarter. Winter sports have completed their season, with the exception of the RMR hockey team, who will have their first playoff game at URI on Friday, March 13, at 7:00. Spring sports, such as softball, baseball, and outdoor track, and the boys' lacrosse team, will have their first practices of the season this week and next week, and all our spring sports athletes are looking forward to successful seasons. Girls' lacrosse will be a new team this year, starting as a club sport and hoping to grow the program for future generations. March is Spring Skills USA Month for NACTAC, so we wish all students the best of luck as they compete in categories like culinary, automotive, carpentry, graphic designs, cosmetology, and AOIT. Rogers students met with guidance counselors in the previous weeks to begin selecting courses for next year, and seniors continue to make plans and await college acceptances. Thank you.
That's good. Any questions? Thank you very much. You have homework tonight?
Yeah. She's very busy.
We won't make you stay, but if you can stay, leave whenever you're ready, okay? We were going to give some certificates out tonight to our silver medalists from the Culinary Arts Program, but some of them had commitments, couldn't come, and the ones who didn't, didn't want to come without their buddies. So, we want to see some face time, so we're gonna hold the certificates. Yeah, okay. Chef is still here, so Chef, would you like to talk to us and just let them know how we missed by seven points, seven tenths of a point? At least we gave others a scare, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, actually. We were, I didn't know who was gonna come up here and speak. The students, it was a five-member team, two of them from North Kingston and the rest of us from Rogers. They had to compete for Pro Start, which is a National Restaurant Association, it's also our certificate program, and the Rhode Island Hospitality Center. We went against six other schools, and they had to, first part of the program was, they had to do four of the basic French vegetable cuts, and they were, did not know which ones that they were gonna be given, they were chosen, and then they also had to fabricate two chickens. And you might think that's, you know, okay, somebody can cut up a chicken, but it's a way that has to be done by the American Culinary Federation. They did a great job. And then they had to come up with a four-course meal to be executed and produced in one hour, from the prepping of the product to the finished product using two buns and burners. And I'll tell you, I was very proud of them, they did an excellent, excellent job. They, we worked, coupled, you know, did a few practice runs, but I was really, really happy the way they executed themselves and looked professional, and they had a lot of good, got a lot of feedback from the judges, and some of the judges were some top-notch culinary experts in the country, so that was pretty nice, and seven tenths, so. I think it's just, boy, we lost by points, but they did an excellent, excellent job. And if you've seen the pictures of what they done, they did that all the time, so I mean, when you see one picture and you show another picture, it was world-class, world-class products. You should be very proud of those students. And I actually did nothing to this, actually, I had absolutely nothing to do with it.
Were they all seniors?
No, we had two seniors and, well, and three juniors, so we'll have more coming back. Only four participated, and then we had one, an expediter. So he was the one that did, he was the clock, he was the timer, and would tell people what to do and when to do it, and stuff like that. And the greatest part about it is for first, for second prize, each student got $27,000 in scholarships.
Yes, yes.
So everyone asked me, $27,000, is that a mistake? And I go, no, it's 20, everyone, five kids, got a packet from different universities and colleges from all over the country for $25,000. And I have the students now that are, New England Culinary in Vermont, NECKI, gave the largest one of $12,000. And I have one student right now is talking to NECKI about going, and if he does an online course over the summer, he gets another $12,000.
Oh, gee.
So, we're talking freshman year, he's got 24 grand, all taken care of, so his mom and dad should be very, very happy about that. So, yes, ma'am?
Well, just for the press, I see Sean is here, the students are Tyler Carter-
Tyler Carter from North Kingston.
What year?
Christine, he's a senior. He's been with me three years, and he's gonna be at Skills, he'll be doing baking and pastry at Skills. Christine Kennedy?
Yes.
She's from North Kingston, she's a junior. Then we had Claudia Olivera, she's a junior, Rogers. And then we had Corey Anderson, he's a junior, no, he's a senior, from Rogers. And then my, the guy that was the expediter was Ronnie Santa Maria, and he's a junior. And Ronnie's gonna be doing the Skills, the commercial baking with Tyler, and I think that's it. Oh, and Chris, Ms. Kennedy is gonna be doing dining room service. So they were all around, all-around projects, so. They're also competing for another big chunk of scholarship money, and then also represent Rhode Island in the Skills USA in Kansas City in May.
And that competition is this Friday?
That's, no, it's, well, some of, for Skills, ours is next week, the 20th, Friday, at Johnson-Wales University, and then I think Auto and AOIT, they're this week, so it's a big, big, yeah, we're really busy, very, very busy, so, yes.
Well, it's paying off.
I hope so, I hope so.
I had a question about, what do, when your students graduate, is it a certificate? They graduate in culinary, I mean-
If they, if they, they get a certificate from the National Restaurant Association if they pass that test. So, it's not my test, it's their test. So it's a two-year program, basically, starting their junior year and finishing their senior year, and plus getting all the hours that they need, the 400 hours. So they have to, yeah, it's almost like getting your freshman year in college, and a lot of the colleges that we deal with, Johnson-Wales and Bristol Community College, and we're trying to get going with CIA, they'll give college credit for those, so, which is really nice.
Mr. Leary didn't see-
Ma'am Chair, thank you. Chef, just a quick question before you answer, can I explain? You mentioned that there's French-cut vegetables, so before you answer, I want you to know, I've worked in the citizenry for 40 years, usually in the front of the house, not in the back of the house.
Okay.
So, I do know where the Irish-cut vegetables are, it's the meat cleaver, what's a French-cut?
Oh, they had to do, okay, you had Brenois and Julien, and they're different, different cuts. So they, Tournay, they had fruit mushrooms and stuff, so they did not know which ones that they were gonna do, so they had the four students that were out there, and then the judges would go vegetable, vegetable, chicken, chicken. So they all had to know it, so you couldn't bring your chicken ringer in there, you know, the guy that knows how to do chickens, and so everyone had to do it. And Christina, who did, who was chosen from North Kingston, was the least of the experienced ones, so when I saw her get the chicken, I go, okay, you know, we'll see what happens. And the judge said it was the fastest he has ever seen anybody deboned a chicken correctly at her at that age, and that was really nice. And he even called Christina by her name, so I thought that was rather, rather personal that he actually brought that out, so.
They had to feel good for themselves.
Yeah, I did, and they did. I kind of, kind of, you know, I wish that we got eight tenths more points, but, you know, they were really happy, and they're all stoked to do it next year. They're even planning their menu next year, so, which is really, really good. You should be really proud of those kids.
Chef, I just wanna ask you, if I have the chance-
Yeah.
-because I wanna gloat a little bit about it, but I can pride. You can look at your team, and you can call out from your team four or five people. What were you up against for, let's say, a roster on other teams, where I think you have 12 to choose from?
I had, I have 16 active students in my program right now, and I took, we took five. We were gonna do two teams, but my sous chef Jen says, no, we're only gonna do one, and that was enough. And we're going against Davies, Davies beat us, and they have well over 100 students in their program.
Awesome.
And they have four teachers, they have four teachers, and they have one baking teacher and a culinary chef that just practice, they just practice the contest, that's what they do. So from September until March, those kids are, that's all they do, is practice, practice, practice that. And we came in second, I think that was great.
Awesome.
I think so, I really do.
First year?
Yeah, this is the first year we've done this one.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
The more you talk, the more I wanna brag. If anybody's interested in looking at the pictures of the dishes, I think in color-
It's all on the board.
They're all on our website, so check it out. And they'll get their certificates next meeting if you can haul them in here. Reports from superintendent and staff, school-based coordinator, my update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you, tying into the theme we just heard and the discussion about NACTAC, you'll notice from our very talented, and I wanna thank Carrie Clark, our school-based coordinator, for all the work she's done in this area. You'll notice her update is brief but powerful. You can see from it that the open house, there were over 140 attendees that passed through our doors with at least 60 prospective new students. Right before this meeting, I talked briefly with Carrie, and at this point in time, we have 46 signed, sealed, and delivered applications, with another 20 that we know were waiting for superintendents to sign from the sending districts. And tomorrow, we have a NACTAC shadow day, where 47 prospective students will come to visit Rogers High School, they'll be from Tiverton, Portsmouth, and Thompson, and of those 47, none have yet filled out an application. One of the most impressive things that Carrie shares in her update is that all the multi, the different levels that came from all the different communities, and they're continuing the multi-level efforts as far as working on the outreach. We also will follow up with attendees, and we also realize that we need to continue to share information, communicate with parents and the communities during the spring and summer months as well. We're having discussions about whether we should have some kind of informal get-togethers over the summer, so to bring the students together before school starts. As I mentioned, the shadow day is tomorrow, and I just ask that you accept her report as is. Thank you.
I will ask for a motion. Question?
Just wanted to mention that the young lady I mentor, she's in the eighth grade now at Thompson, and she's just been so excited that she's gonna be coming down here tomorrow, they were advertising a new design, and she's, and she's planning now, well, when I go to college, so I figured, ooh, this is good, you know, so she's, for someone who was a little nervous about coming down to Rogers, this is a big thing for her, so it's good news.
It is good news.
I like the last sentence, next to the last sentence in Carrie's report. My goal is to have 70 applications by the end of April and have a waiting list for each of our programs. That's wonderful, and she believes it's realistic, so, could I have a, well, we'll accept them all together.
Sorry the report was delayed till today, but a lot going on. Any questions? Mr. Leary?
I was gonna say, dump the other report, it looks like an influx of money coming in here, with all these new students in there.
Say it too loud.
Yeah. $9,000 per student, what is it, $9,000 per student?
It depends if they're part-time, full-time, what program they're in, how many minutes they're here. If you want an average number, I'll work it out for you next time.
No, 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 I, I don't, that's real good, that's a real good report.
Yes, it is a real good report.
I'm sorry.
Confess to Carrie for doing, you know, for getting this all together. Mr. Hanos, both of them putting this together, getting really tremendous asset, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of new students here possibly, you know, a lot of new students.
So you might have to move me out of the building into a room with a window?
We might need that office for a classroom.
Make a deal.
Is there anything in here that we need to pay particular attention to, Joan?
Well, this was, as requested, the worst-case scenario, and I'm projecting as of this moment in time.
Superintendent, anything to add?
No, I think we highlighted, Joan highlighted in the memo, we, you know, have, the revenues we have referred to were mentioned already in an update from me to you, the $69,000 reimbursement from the trust, and as the finance business director just stated, we are giving you projections that reflect our worst-case scenario, and all of them are highlighted here. For the audience, we have some increases due to, we have some buybacks, we do have some students' tuitions that are, have increased, and we were informed that additional students in our DCYF program. We're also adding all costs back to any items that we were hoping to have some savings due, or to be realized for, through negotiation. Our salary budget lines were adjusted to the UCOA classification, and the total salary payouts have been projected throughout the end of the year. The city also issued a new contract last July, and waste management increases are a little bit higher than expected. Those rates come in after we have developed our budget, and there were additional snowplowing costs for this year. Water and sewage has increased due to a waterline breakage, if you remember, back in the fall at Rogers, and we do have some students that have transitioned over into one of our programs at the East Bay Career Academy. Electricity rates have also risen, and the custodial supply line, this includes toilet paper, cleaning supplies, ice melt, and other items, has increased also to high consumption of the products and the use of these products this year.
I have a question.
David?
Not being too specific. Online, 53209, on page two of the broken down section. Superintendent Brown, would you please be able to let us know, there's a negative on bus assistance and monitors? Do we have an idea of why that is? Do we have an increase in busing this year, or do we have, please?
We did have, we did have an increase in busing this year, we also had an increase, and it was primarily due to our out-of-district buses and some student-related situations, which, again, in my updates to you, I have been keeping you informed. And also, we did hope to realize some savings on that line going forward with the transportation company, and we were not able to do that. And again, in an earlier meeting, I believe back in the fall, before the new committee came on, I actually thanked the transportation committee company, because they actually did try to do, they did a national study, and they did try to help us going forward.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Very good synopsis, Superintendent Brown. Just a question on the electricity, I thought we had a contract with-
We have a contract for supply.
For supply.
We do not have a contract for distribution.
Right.
So if your electric bill at home went up, ours went up too.
Yeah, I thought it was both, I didn't realize, I forgot, yeah.
No, can't get away from national grid.
Any other questions? David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for the superintendent and the business manager, please. So it looks like the worst-case scenario now is approaching $1.4 million in a shortfall for fiscal '15, is that correct?
Correct.
For fiscal '16 planning purposes, if there is not an agreement with the retirees, and if the retirees take legal action, or something happens that causes a freeze in potential negotiations, are we planning in fiscal '16 for an offset of that money?
So if I understand you correctly, the worst-case scenario with the projected shortfall is 1.37, and we would have to act accordingly as far as addressing the deficit, if you're asking me that question. We would have to act accordingly as far as budgeting going forward.
Right, so are we planning, since we, this evening are being presented with a worst-case scenario for the end of fiscal '15-
We will budget as if no agreements are changed.
Are we planning to-
You'll have to budget as if-
Can I, can I ask my question, Madam Chair?
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you did.
I did not. I asked one question, I did not ask my second.
Okay.
Thank you. Since we have been given this evening a worst-case scenario for fiscal '15, are we preparing for a worst-case scenario for fiscal '16 at this point?
Well, it's in process.
So the answer is yes? Last question, Madam Chair, on this subject. Fiscal '15, outside of negotiations, are we planning any other remedies to reduce the proposed shortfall?
We're working with the city and the adjutant, is it adjutant general?
The auditor general.
Auditor general.
Let me be more specific then. Are there any internal remedies that the Newport School Department, through the administration, is planning to offset the projected shortfall outside of retiring negotiations and/or other negotiations?
Okay.
As, okay, just to refresh everyone, we have implemented a budget freeze, that has been going on since November. We have delayed any hirings of any positions that were budgeted or people who have left, there has been a freeze on that. We have also cut back on, and tightened our belts in all areas, and we will continue to do that.
Becky?
Yeah, just wait a minute, are you finished then?
Thank you for the answers.
Okay. I just wanna remind people, too, that we're, right now, we're without a, someone technology director, and we're without someone, you know, facilities manager, so that was half the year we've been without one, you know, we've been out, we've only have one secretary, we're down one, you know, executive secretary, and Marson's filling in and doing an incredible job, but, and those are just the ones I can think of, the social worker at the middle school, we're down one social worker, middle school and high school, so all those positions, two next year, I mean, those are things you cannot go without, and they're gonna have to be built back into the budget, you know, so.
Okay, so I just wanna be really clear. The positions that have not been filled, and we have not filled at this point in time, are all department, I should call them administrative positions. The social worker has and is, was still in the budget for Thompson, and they just have not found anyone yet. And so we still do have that one, because there is a need there for that.
Right, but that's just-
We're trying not to impact the schools.
So we've done an incredible, I mean, I'll just, you know, say the administration has done an incredible job of doing without these people, and everybody's like kicking in to do more than their share, but it's also gonna impact our budget next year, too, because we're gonna start out with a bigger structural deficit, because we have to replace, you know, those people, that money's been cut out of our budget the second half of the year, correct?
Correct. So one of the things we are, and we have been doing, is we're continued having conversations, and we've had very positive conversations, I will say, with the city, as far as how we can share some services, or how we can work together to make it more efficient and be a win-win for both sides. So we're, those have been very positive, as I've shared with you, and I should publicly state, for the record, acting city manager Joseph Nicholson and city finance director Laura Citron, along with me and Joan Tracy, have been sitting down, and we've had some very positive discussions, and we're working together to solve this problem together, and we're actually discussing the possibilities of mapping out a budget for two years, so that we can be very clear on going forward, just to have a draft in hand. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Joan.
You're welcome.
Facilities?
There is no update. As the facilities director, there's no update.
How, how, how are our-
Do you wanna know about RTU 3?
Yes.
The roof fan?
Yeah.
I know RTU 3, the roof fan.
Yeah.
That work is supposed to happen this week, and I believe it's on March 12.
Thursday.
Yes, so, and again, I wanna thank Jim Farrar, David Hanos, who's part of facilities, as far as everyone's been staying on top of that, and Vinnie Butler out at Pell School. Thank you.
They went up on the roofs, I didn't.
I have a question. Are we still on track to get the matting done in the playground with the funds from-
We haven't talked about matting, we've been talking about snow and RTUs, so, I'm sure it's still, wherever it was, it hasn't been-
It hasn't been moved yet, okay, I'll discuss it.
No, it hasn't been moved.
RTU sounds like a Star Wars movie, yeah.
Enrollment reports and demographics?
The enrollment, the enrollment reports are before you this evening, there are no major changes, there's just a slight increase here and there of two to five students.
And our total enrollment is 2128, right?
I'm pulling up that report right now, yes. I do wanna say, if you gotta look carefully at it, we do have 12 outplaced students, so they are not, and you have to look at the 44 that are not in our buildings, but for the total school population, it's 2128.
Homeless report?
Homeless report, I also believe there wasn't any, off the top of my head. The February 2015 numbers remain the same as the January 2015 report, there were no changes as of this report in the status of families.
In the last report, we were down a few, weren't we?
Yes.
I remember.
Yes, which is a good thing.
Our progress report?
The progress update report, for those of you in the audience, it is a color chart that we present- that we present, that's color-coded, that shows where we are in implementing the goals for the district for this year. So we color-coded them green, yellow, orange, and red. As of this, this month, the only thing is, due to the capacity in finance, we are still a little bit behind as far as getting, preparing our budget, but we're working on that as far as for the 2016. That is the only area, you see some delayed areas. I do have another update just to keep everyone fully informed. Today, as Mrs. Gaines reported, we did speak with the auditor general, Dennis Hoyle, today. Joan Tracy, Laura Citron, people from Ride, Mark Dunham, and others were on the call. It went very well. The auditor general was very, I'm going to categorize it as he was very pleased in what he heard. He thought things were moving along and we would catch up with each other in another two weeks. I did share with him and that we are working in a very collaborative, positive way right now with the city. Laura Citron and Joan answered some questions he had on the accounting, and I also publicly thanked Mark Dunham for his assistance. He's been helping us in other areas from Ride. As I already mentioned, NACTAC will have its shadow day tomorrow. I did, for the public, I just wanted to remind everyone in the public of the different options that we do offer high school students these days. We have the NACTAC program, which is a hands-on learning. We have our academic programs, our AP and our general ed academic courses. And we also have transitional programs here at Rogers. And for the committee, I did want to update you on that. So for our alternative pathways, we do offer our students, every, every shoe doesn't fit everyone the same way. I don't know if that's a good analogy, but everyone has different needs, and all students have different types of learning styles and come from different situations in which they are able to fulfill their learning. And we do have some students from time to time that, as in all other districts, do ask to be placed in a transitional program. Some of them are for GED programs, some of them are for other collaborative programs that we participate in in the East Bay and working with adult ed and the community school. I just wanted to report out on some of those students. We have, for the weekend ending March 2nd, 2015, we have eight students in an alternative program that is in, housed in JFK and is in Middletown. And of that, this week, we have one of our students that completed her GED in record time. And she's also a student that, that will be working with our transition coordinator to college. She's going to start transitioning over some of her work into getting college credit, and she's looking forward now to going on to the next level in her education. Two other students are doing very well, and they're thriving, and our hopes are that within the next couple of months, they will finish their GED. And then a fourth student is very close to being able to receive her diploma here from Rogers. She's a young person that was not able to complete it on time, and she's finishing up on her senior project. We do have three students that we're still following and trying to get them to school. I will tell you, it's, some of it's good news and some of it, we still have three, three students. We're trying to get them into attending classes on a regular basis, and we're working on that. Just wanted to let you know our attendance people are on it. And then, other good news, and I know this is a great ceremony that happens usually in the summer for us, is our Diploma Plus. And these are some students that had been with us in the, in the past, and they decided they wanted to go back and get their high school diploma. And we have three former students, and these students come from all different communities, but we have three former Rogers students that it looks like they'll be walking the stage as well this spring. So Elizabeth Bryant, Eliza, I'm sorry, Eliza Bryant. Eliza Bryant is a person's name you should know. She is our person that this year has been tracking and making sure. I remember the night Mrs. Boland sat here and said, "We need to make sure we know where these kids are at all times." So we're making an extra effort and staying focused on those students so we make sure they do eventually get some type of degree to move on forward. And-
Now, is she working with Eddie?
She work, yes, she does. She works, she works with Mr. Merritt, our attendance officer, and she is employed by Tracy Shea in the community school. So she's one of our partners in the community. Eliza Bryant.
David?
Mine, mine goes back to, because we, the strategic goals, I just had a question about that.
Okay.
So when I was going through the Newport School Committee goals, I noticed that there's a, like, next year, do we want to align those two even more closely? Because there's a couple missing from our, from what our Newport, you know, the school committee goals are to here, and it would just be, you know, that way we could track those two. I don't know if that sounds-
I think that's what this is supposed to be doing, isn't it?
But, but there's one missing. For instance, the, the goal concerning aligning the middle school social studies and science classes.
The redesign?
The re, is that, is it not part of the strategic, but it's on our, our school committee goals?
Right. And I, I'm sorry, I thought it was in this one as well.
I thought, I just went through it again, and I couldn't find it, but I don't want to take your time anymore, but I thought I went through it twice looking for it.
Okay. So I will look at it as well.
Just add it, just like, yeah.
It should be in there. Somehow it got dropped because there's specific dates on it as well.
Right. Right. There's May 15th.
May, May 15th on that one. Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
One other thing I'd like you to explain. In the graduation rate, we had, one of our goals was to increase the rate by 4%. And at the time, it was 68. In January, there's an adjustment or a reporting or-
Correct.
Something happens at Ride.
Correct.
Would you explain that whole thing? Because now we're looking at 72%.
All right. So the gradu, the actual graduation rate comes out in December, January. So June of 2014, the rates came out December 2014, January 2015. At that point in time, we were, I believe we're at 73% now?
We're at 70, 72 now. Well, Ride is 73. I don't know why there's a difference.
All right. So, well, one could be district, one could be the actual, or the vice versa. But I know for this year, I, I thought we were trying to get a 77% because you wanted to have a 4% increase.
Right.
Right.
But when we set our goals, it was at 68.
Right.
We want to maintain that 4% until we hit 100.
Correct. That's, at least that's my administration's understanding. Right. Okay.
Okay. David?
Madam Chair, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, but as I look through this and become more, more comfortable in this seat, I guess, I tend to want to ask a few more questions. I see we track the ALP and we give that. What about the out-of-district placement? Is that something we want to, there's a huge expense to send a child out of district. Do we track that child and see what the success rate is for that student? And I know we're trying to do some things more in-house to, to deal with students that may be sent out of district as a cost-saving measure, which I think goes to my colleague, Mr. Carlin's question, what are we doing in the future? But I think unless that's not something we can track effectively, I think it's something maybe we should be tracking just to see if we can be doing something different or maybe something better.
Okay. So the answer is yes, we do track it. As a matter of fact, we do monthly reviews, and we also track their attendance, making sure that they do attend the out-of-district placements. To Mr. Carlin's question earlier and to your point, I have mentioned before, we are looking at the programs we're offering in our buildings, and we already are aware that we will need some kind of behavior support plan, program, sorry, for Pell School next year based upon the present, the current enrollment we have. So to avoid higher costs in sending students out of district and also because we want to keep as many children as possible in, on Equinix Island and going to their local schools, that will be a recommendation that will be coming up from our Student Service Director, and we just had a conversation this afternoon about it, specifically digging down to particular children and particular needs. We're also talking about staffing and where the appropriate supports are needed based upon students. So we also know at Thompson Middle School, we have a high percentage of certain students with a very similar learning need or disability. So we're looking right now into the types of programs we can offer there that are better for them.
Which could in turn also potentially be a cost savings for the district.
Correct.
Where you'll have an analysis for us.
Yes. Yes. So I've asked her to do a proposal together, give us the pricing, and then do the cost analysis. This is what it will cost. So it'll be very clear if we sent the children out of district, this would be the cost. If we keep the children in the district, this is what the costs are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
I had one more comment. I like to make this comment every year about this time, but March, the Ides of March is coming up, yeah? That, which is, what, for all of you, that's, that the state determines your reimbursement on, like, it's usually right about the 15th. I think this weekend, it might come on a Sunday, so it won't be this Sunday. But you have to have all your information, and they only determine it by elementary school kids. So you have to identify all your children that are free and reduced lunch. And as of last year, every student that was free and reduced lunch was worth an extra $1,596, I think, to the district. They, they were worth an extra .40 to the district. So we, it's really important, and I know last year, they made it last minute, and, and we were able to get over it like a threshold. And I haven't, didn't look it up today, but we're very close to 60%. So we just want to make sure you keep it over, if we can, keep it over that threshold and, and that we have all the kids identified. The difficult ones are the out-of-district placements sometimes. But anyway, so I just-
Yes.
I, just remind, you know, reminding us that, that we need to make sure we're up on it.
Right. Get the applications in.
The applications are in.
Okay. Can we move on?
Make a motion to accept the reports as read or presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reports accepted. Consent agenda, is there a motion to move the consent agenda? Or would anyone like something removed from it?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we moved the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the appointments?
Okay. I'd like to congratulate Rogers Girl Softball Head Coach Lauren Dunbar and Rogers High School Softball Assistant Coach James Gizzi. Lauren Dunbar is an English teacher at Rogers High School, and James Gizzi has previously coached at Rogers High School. At this time, they will be taking on the school soft, girl softball team, and they are being appointed pending their certification. I don't know if we want to, we do have a resignation, Elizabeth Coleman Lee, Special Education Para-educator, Pell School. And we do have a retirement. We want to thank for her many years of service, Conley and Repose, school nurse teacher at Rogers High School. Mrs. Repose's retirement date was posted before, but she has extended that date to April 2nd, 2015. And I think I'll hold on to that one. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have some new members of the subcommittee. Are you leaving? Because I was going to call on you for-
Yeah, the chair's been called.
Okay. Members of the subcommittee are appointed, Public Relations, Lynn Segley, Beth Cullen, and Holly Patterson. Pre-K, Erin Margolis, Health and Wellness, Bob Dresser, Meg Edwards. Elizabeth McGibbri and Tom Phelan. Discussion items, projected potential budget shortfall, and next steps. Have we already covered that? Would you like to gently sum up what you said earlier?
Okay. Excuse me, I just have to- Okay. So very briefly, I have already reported out, there have been meetings with the Acting City Manager Joseph Nicholson and Laura Citron with Joan Tracy, and the four of us have sat down, and we've had some discussions on how we can move forward as far as setting up a plan and then bringing it back to the committee and bringing it to the council for, of course, all of you to decide if you want to move forward. We're looking at, again, I know I'm repeating myself, but we're looking at seeing if we can share some services, if we can deliver some services in a different way that is more cost-efficient, and also have a more open communication going forward as far as sharing our budgets, budget with, budgets with each other, and as far as the city raising any concerns they may have going forward. I believe there'll be quarterly meetings with our, our Finance Director and the City Finance Director. They'll sit down going over the budget, and we're continuing to brainstorm different ideas as we move forward. But we do plan on mapping out some specific plan within the next week or so to bring back to both.
Okay. Any questions?
Question, Madam Chair. Will we deal tonight with the issue of the potential transfer of the triplet school to the city of Newport?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is discussion 7.3. 7.2, Bobby.
Okay. It's right there, I guess, for you to be. We had a financial advisory subcommittee meeting, and it came out an excellent idea from the committee that, look at this, we're going to have to have a sturdy budget next year. It won't be a spending budget, obviously. We all know that, you know? So this is some ways of dealing with that next year. Anybody have any questions? I guess the best way is to have a, along with that.
I, I, I think the superintendent mentioned with your number one about 3% reduction.
Right.
She was talking about 10%.
Right.
She's already had that discussion with them.
Right. She did. I saw that in your update from her, absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
That may have to be the case. I guess we've got to see where we're at financially, what each, what, what each district is, you know, it's, it's, the money's on the table, look at what the percentage is, people. We may have to come up with a number because every school's different, you know, and I know that might be hard too. But I think the biggest thing that came out of that meeting was that the money that we need from the, from the retiree count that was misappropriated, number mixed up there, we're going to have to for sure borrow that money from the city, and the less money possible, and we're going to pay it back. So I think it's key is that we're borrowing it and we pay it back. So I think the most important part of that.
And I think that is part of the discussion.
Yes.
Right.
And the council is listening.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just on number two, and I think Bobby knows this, the statement that the council was going to loan the state money for Broadway.
Right.
That was road bond money. That was not general fund money.
Yeah, I had, I had to, with the mayor, she moved through the whole thing.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they won't give us road bond money.
No, they can't. Especially the way they are right now.
I know it.
Okay. Any other questions? Becky?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what he said about number three says that to cut the budget at each school by 3%. I think, you know, it's difficult to understand what 3% really represents because, you know, like Joan pointed out the other evening, are you, you know, taking into account, you know, their substitute, you know, list? Are you taking into account, you know, their textbooks? So I think, you know, if, if we work to come up with a, a number for each school might be a little more, you know, clear to everybody because it's going to, you know, it's going to take some, like, some hard decisions by a lot of people next year, a lot of stakeholders, and it's, you know, an unfortunate, but, you know, it's been a long time in the making. This just didn't happen in one year, that's for sure. So.
David?
I, on the other hand, look at it as a positive light because I, I believe that our administrators and our principals are going to come up with some outside-of-the-box thoughts, i.e. out-of-district placement ideas that are going to start to come in. So I have faith that the principals will actually come up with some very- So, I have faith that the principals will actually come up with some very good ideas, and I'd rather have them look at their budgets. I think it's an excellent idea to have them look at their budgets for each school, and let them try to figure out what may or may not be a cost savings, and something is, it's not simple, it's a complicated issue that you were talking about, Superintendent, was would it be more beneficial or more fiscally prudent for the district to have a social worker to deal with some students, which could, and then, in fact, lower the cost for the out-of-district placement, which would lower the busing needs? And, I mean, that is a high price tag that we have, and I'm, I'm quite confident that our principals will come up with, with some real good ideas, once they get some direction and once they sit down, because I believe this is something very new to them, but...
Right. I, I think the perfect example of this is when we took away the NACTEC Director, we, you know, took the program and basically, you know, ripped the bottom out of it, and so therefore, you, you know, you save a penny, but you're, you know, pound foolish, because, you know, we, we had no one that was reinvesting in the program, and now that we have a director, I mean, look what's happening. It's unbelievable, you know, by putting some investment back into it. So, I think that's what you're talking about, you know, is, is looking down the road, the big picture.
Now, I would respectfully recommend that, first of all, having the principals working with the Superintendent, making some adjustments, some cuts, I would hope that they would get input from the people in the trenches, the department chairs, you know, on the, on the middle and high school, and the, and the teachers, because they'll, they're the ones who'll know what they can, you can live without understanding that so many contribute anyway to their classrooms, but nevertheless, I think you have to get the input from people who are dealing with this every day, because we can't, we, we don't know, you know, we're just here on this particular level, but you need the folks who are working with this all the time. The idea of getting a loan from the, the city lending us the money, I hope it's interest-free, because where are we going to get that? That's the thing.
Well, that'll be part of the negotiation.
This is part of the whole discussion. Oh, I understand that, yes, yeah.
But I agree with most of the people here, that decisions made, the best decisions are the decisions that are made by those who are closest to the kids. So, putting this budget problem in the ear of the principals is good, is a good move, because they'll work with the teachers and they'll come up with something that they can live with. Housing, future housing plans for...
Point of order, real quickly, Miss Madam Chair. I apologize if I am incorrect, but regarding the consent agenda, I, I believe we had a motion, a second discussion, but I could be wrong, and I hope I am, but I don't think we voted on it.
I have moved by Sandra, seconded by Kathy, and carried seven to zero.
And I'm wrong, and I'm glad I am.
That's why Marson's there.
Absolutely.
I didn't remember. 7.4, no, 7.3, housing plans for students. There's been a lot of discussion about turning Triplet back to the city, and my question is, how do we know what is the best plan for future housing if we haven't had a study on the cost for the various recommendations that we have? We had an extensive recommendation made in 2012, but there was never any follow-up discussion. There were two recommendations, one to keep Triplet, one to put mobile units at Triplet. There was never a financial statement with either recommendation. And I think before we let Triplet go, because as I've said before, once it's gone, it's gone, and we have to think about future housing, we have no projection of enrollment for the next five years. Where are the kids going if the enrollment goes up? If we don't have any property, and we don't have any idea of what it would cost for alternate suggestions for housing? So, I'm, I want to hear some discussion, and I want to see some proof of where we, we go, and how much it would cost the taxpayers. Kathy?
Madam Chairwoman, I also have concern, too, because the Pre-K is currently in Middletown, and I know the Superintendent has worked with them to extend the lease for one year, but we don't know what will happen after that. And if the town of Middletown decides they need John Kennedy School, what will we do with the Pre-K children? We don't have, we wouldn't have another place for them. So, that's a concern I have about letting Triplet School go.
David?
All good concerns, albeit the report was accepted on December 11th of 2012, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but it is March 10th of 2015, and we do not have a feasibility report. I am going to make a motion momentarily, but I feel for the discussion purposes of this. We need to take action on this, maybe in as early as our next meeting, but we absolutely need the feasibility studies. We already have the hard work, and we also have some new discussion going on, little rumblings about the report, and potential size of Pell School, or I guess, student population of Pell School, concerns from parents. But with that report, it wouldn't be fair to those individuals to just take it and shred it. So, we did ask for enrollment data, which the Superintendent kindly afforded us today, gives us an idea on where our enrollment has been going, or actually, a couple days ago, we were given it. But this is a comprehensive study that we need to do. We have a giant deficit looming over our head. We have a valuable asset of Triplet School that could be sold if it's vetted, and that's the appropriate thing to do, which has roof leaks, and roof leaks don't get better, so the building will get worse, and our asset will become, basically, won't be worth anything. So, I am going to ask that this school committee charge at this as fast and as, as we can, as prudently as we can, but not in too pragmatic of a way that we're here, and I'm going to go be going out for my reelection, and we still don't have an answer. So, my sole desire is to take action on this within the next month or two. Whether we keep the school or not, we need to repair it. If we're not, we need to exorcise it. That's pretty much it. That's, that's what we're here to do, and, and I do thank the group for the...
All right, let's move on to action. Pre-K requests for access to KidsNet. Kathy and Dr. Shoemaker.
Dr. Shoemaker? Well, Dr. Shoemaker has been Chair of the Pre-K Subcommittee for several years, and he's worked very hard in trying to get vital information from the Rhode Island Department of Health, regard, from KidsNet, on demographic information, on basically the names, the dates of birth, and contact information for preschool children, so that the committee can better track these kids and see, make sure they get an adequate early education. And one suggestion made to him was that to look for the endorsement of the Newport School Committee. And so, at this point, I think it's an order, it's an action item, so I would like to make a motion, and I think Dr. Shoemaker would then like to probably provide some additional information. But at this point, I would move that the Newport School Committee supports the efforts of its Pre-K Subcommittee, and hereby requests access from the Rhode Island Department of Health to the democratic information within KidsNet for children from birth to age...
Wait a minute, you don't mean democratic, you mean demographic?
Yes. Did I say democratic? I'm sorry. Demographic information within KidsNet to children from birth to age five living in Newport. This information would include KidsNet IDs, the children's names, dates of birth, their addresses, and other contact information. The purpose of the information is to assist the Subcommittee in finding all kids living in Newport, starting at birth to age five, in order to be sure that all Pre-K kids in Newport have access to high-quality Pre-K, in accordance with the Rhode Island State laws.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Dr. Shoemaker?
Well, Madam Chair, I will support this no matter what. He's sat here for two hours now, we could have, we could have, we could have dropped the agenda motion and moved the agenda for him, because it's done a half hour ago.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I've been serving on the Subcommittee for a while now, and I know Dr. Shoemaker has been trying mightily through various ways to get the information. I think there's an assurance that any sensitive information, that's not what we're looking for. We just want to get this whole idea of how many youngsters are out there, so, for many reasons, not only, I shouldn't say not only, but not solely to inform parents and the caretakers of the various programs and resources that are available for them to really, to help assure that their youngsters will succeed, but also will help the Newport Public Schools and help central administration when it comes to projecting the number of, of slots that we need for Pre-K, for kindergarten, and so forth, so that we can get perhaps a more accurate idea of how many youngsters are coming. Obviously, there's a margin of error in here, because there are people who are quite, we have a highly mobile population, but for those who move out, new people come in, and we can get at least a good average and a good idea of how many kids will be coming into the schools. Again, the, any of the sense, sensitive information is not what we're looking for. We're looking for the contact information, the most up-to-date possible. And I think with the cooperation of this particular, the, this KidsNet, this particular source, we can, again, be proactive, and I think this is something that we are constantly looking at. But as I say, Dr. Shoemaker's been working mightily on this for a long, long while, and the fact that we're in the position to support this is very important.
Yes, I can attest to the length of time he's been after this. And, and the frustrating part is that several of the partners in the Pre-K Committee, Pre-K Subcommittee, have access to this information, but they can't share it.
Exactly.
And I, I, I don't know what, what you have to prove in order to get on this list of sharing, but if the schools can help access it, if, if it's, I, I don't know. I don't know what their measure is. When people around the table have the information, but you can't, you can't ask them about it. They're doing the same kind of work that we're trying to do in the Subcommittee, and we can't get the information. So, if being a part of a school system will move that, then I think we should do what we can to move it along. So, I would support the motion.
Madam Chair, may I add to that, that a letter be sent to the Director of the Rhode Island Department of Health stating the committee's endorsement or request for the information?
I'll work with the Superintendent on that.
Thank you.
You sure you don't want to say anything?
Last chance.
I almost said something after the vote. I didn't see a letter.
Okay. Comment?
Yeah, so, I understand, now, I'm fully supportive of this, but what I'm trying to understand is, is there a letter that we're, like, a, a specific letter that we're endorsing that gets sent out?
Kathy just asked if we write a letter.
Yes, I added that to the motion then.
Okay. I guess I was looking for, but so we haven't, we just haven't gotten the letter written.
No, but I'm asking that.
Okay, and, and that letter's addressed to who?
The Director of the Department of Health.
Let me just say, also, I've been talking to Judge Flanders, some of you may have known he was...
They're going to... Yeah, he's going to, he's getting mad at us.
Yeah, you got to go to the mic.
I can't hear you, Mike.
Judge Flanders, who used to be head of the Regents, stepped down, stepped down being a judge, and he's, I don't know where he stepped down from.
His private practice.
Anyhow, he was on our original committee back four years ago, and he's, was very helpful, and so I've sort of used him as somebody to get some feedback, and he said, "Look, first thing you want to do is get the support of the school committee, then we'll sit down and map out our next plan. I think your idea of sending a letter to the Health Department is good, but I would like to sit down with Judge Flanders to see how he would like to proceed." Let me just say, as long as I'm at the mic, RIDE has put out a request for proposal for grants. They've gotten a lot of money from the federal government. It's in two parts. One is a developmental, which the State of Rhode Island went through that process years ago, and developed a Pre-K program. Now, the second part is the existing Pre-K programs to expand them. One of the Pre-K programs was put in, I understand they put in for a grant, did they not?
Correct.
Is our Pre-K. In other words, they're saying, "We want some of this money so we can extend, we could expand our Pre-K program." So, you guys have a difficult decision to make about Triplet, but it's going to be more complicated if there's more kids coming in the pipeline, and you don't know what to do with them. So, I just point that out. It's not going to be an easy, not going to be an easy decision to make. But thank you.
Thank you. So, we have motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to...
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Automotive technology, garage door bids. There any, are there any questions? There's no doubt we need them. All you have to do is walk by them, they shake.
I was going to make the motion to, to accept the bid, you know, to the, accept the bid that was suggested.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Joan?
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
The fund, the funding source is the NACTEC money that the state gave us...
Perkins?
No. The NACTEC money that the state gave us when we took up the building.
Oh.
We have about 500 and something odd thousand. And this is an accreditation problem. If we don't fix this door, we may have to close the program, so, you know, it's good all around to fix the door.
Questions?
Is this a two-part vote? Does this require a two votes on behalf of the committee, or is this a one vote, done?
One vote. One and done. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Great, I can go home.
Joe Eva?
Yes.
Go over her door, incorporated.
The meeting dates, the next meeting. You know, maybe we ought to move these action items up. We ought to talk about that, changing our format for our agenda. We have people sitting all that time.
That's why we moved the reports up, Joan.
Yeah.
Because she usually just gives a report.
Yeah. Suggested meeting dates and agenda items. Do we, should we put that on the agenda to talk about the, the next meeting?
No. I think it's always on there. Next meeting dates, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's a standard...
No, I meant as a discussion item.
Oh. You, to Mrs. Bollens' point, you did switch it from to this.
Okay, all right.
Just recently.
We'll leave it alone. David?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I now, I now make a motion. We move to executive session on the jurisdiction of Rhode Island, State Law, Chapter 46, 42, 46, 5, on personnel matters or collective bargaining and litigation, and this is more towards collective bargaining.
Second?
It's been moved in second. It's been moved in second. Any objection? All in favor?
Aye.
They just send it to us.
Opposed? Okay.
Did everybody talk?